Vice Chair Burton saying she is um. She is, there she is, okay. Got it.
Sorry, every time I click on the link in the hearing packet.
Yeah.
Take me to the correct one. I have to go to the website.
It goes, okay, takes you, yeah. Well. Yeah.
It's really, it's really weird and Teams was giving me fits too, of course. So I had to open Teams in the web browser because the application wouldn't actually open on my computer. And I had it working yesterday, so go figure.
When we send the um, when we send the calendar invite, are you able to click directly on the calendar invite? And that takes you straight to it?
So I emailed Charlene earlier, I need to change the email address that I get those invites to. Um, because I can't, I need to separate this from my NAU job.
Yeah.
Yeah, so once, once that's all updated, then I'm thinking it'll work better.
Yeah. Yeah, I can see that. I can see that.
Yeah, but I only emailed her earlier, so I did not expect anything to happen before tonight, so.
All right. Well, and with that, welcome Vice Chair Burton and Commissioners and then staff and public. Got about one minute till um, till four when your study session is um. Is scheduled to begin and I'm gonna share the agenda.
I'm curious that there are two Commissioner Ruggles, it appears to be signed in.
Good, good observation. Thank you, so.
I'd like. I can speak to that. We have a problem. Oh, God. Let me. I cannot get rid one.
Huh. Well.
Because Microsoft thinks I have two accounts.
Interesting.
Well, maybe being signed into two will give you one that you don't have microphone problems with.
Well, being, having two entries into the meeting is better than, better than not being able to get in. All right.
All right, so Jess, yeah, it's 401, do we want to get started?
Absolutely, let's take a look at who we've got here. Um, we've got Commissioner Ruggles on their twice. And we've got Commissioner Wilson. We've got you, Vice Chair Burton. Um, that is all I am seeing on the the Commissioners, which if you'd like, we can move ahead with your study session. And people will, oh, there's, there's Commissioner Togi. Um, we can move on with your study session and and it's just important that we have a, a. Quorum prior to starting the public hearing.
Yeah, did we get confirmation from everyone that, that we would have a quorum for the hearing tonight?
We did get confirmation, yes, that, that from the positive responses we got that we should have a quorum.
Okay, that I think we're good, since we don't need one for the study session, let's go ahead and, and get started.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, welcome to your study session for today, December 4th. And I'm just gonna, if you want to follow along with the agenda that I'm sharing on the screen here. We are gonna start off with the public hearing items that are scheduled for your next hearing, which we Wednesday, January 8th. Uh, we just have two items, both of them are a conditional use permit for RV as a residence. Um, and they're both in the Valley area. Um, Bob is, Bob can orient you to, to these requests. So Bob, if you want to go ahead and share your screen and just give a quick orientation to these two requests, we can move on.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNeely. Uh, the first case here is this one. It's Barbara Simmons is requesting RVs as a residence right here. This is in the center of Valley, you can kind of see there's quite a few houses around this. But normally you see more out in the hinterlands, you know, kind of by themselves. But she has a participation plan, looks like she's got support. Um, so you know, uh, she has the advantage of getting electricity out here, so that's good. All right, let me go ahead and bring up the next one. All right, and this is Richard Acosta. And he's further down, this is, you can tell it's kind of going out of Valley on, or presumed what's a Valley on 64 going south. He's only a few properties off of um, 64. He is on a relatively good road for this area. Uh, so he will not have electricity. And these are both the standard type of thing where you haul your waste and have your water delivered to your house or you go get water yourself. So any questions on either one of these?
It looks like Commissioner Wilson has a question.
Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Um, Mr. Short, I'm curious, we talk about hauling waste and that's a part of the conditional use permit that we grant. Is, do we have any evidence that that actually occurs or does not occur?
Uh, I think we have, we have pretty good evidence that it occurs. And I'm not sure if you know how it works, but basically it's a big tank and you haul it up and dump it at a dump station, just like you would the RV. You can also move the entire RV if you want, you know, but I don't think people like to do that very much, it's a lot, a lot of trouble. Um. I, it becomes obviously a pretty good code violation if it doesn't happen, but there's no way really to, you know, regulate that, to know what exactly happens. But it, I think they probably are taking it to a dump station. But just like anything else, you can't always, you know, you can't regulate everything. It's hard to enforce a lot of things.
So Commissioner Wilson, uh, one, one bit of evidence that we would have on precisely to your question is we, we do get a lot of code enforcement complaints, uh, enforcement requests in the Valley area. And we get, we get a good number for wastewater, for unpermitted dumping of wastewater on a property. We've yet to have had a complaint on a property that was granted a CUP for RV as a permanent residence. All the complaints we've had have been properties that have just completely unpermitted develop, development on them. So at least our evidence from complaints would be that, that properties that, that seek and get the CUP um, are, are in fact um, uh, abiding by regulations and their conditions.
The folks that follow the rules, follow the rules.
Exactly.
Gotcha, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Doesn't look like it, so let's move on then to the Community Development Department update.
Hey, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Um, we go to department update, um, items one and two here is updates to the Flagstaff Regional Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. And Melissa Shaw with our staff can give you a presentation and a discussion on both items one and two. So Melissa, if you wanted to share your screen and discuss with the Commissioners.
Thank you, Jess, good evening Commissioners, give me a moment and I can share a screen. So I will give you an update on both the Flagstaff Regional Plan and then the, um, the Comprehensive Plan update. And we do have um, four different presentations, we won't go through all of them tonight, um, that have been given during the Regional Plan workshop. So we thought this would be a good introduction. Uh, prior to the retreat that, um, that has been um, on your, on your radar and on your, your schedule for a while. And maybe I'll just give a quick, just jump to that part of the update and explain a bit more about the, the retreat. We, uh, we did have conversations with city staff on that and that is going to be a, um, a facilitated retreat by, um, a paid facilitator. So that has been budgeted for, um, for a while. And, um, it looks like right now it's going to be narrowed down to one day in March, um, probably during the beginning of March. So we don't have an exact date yet to update you with, but we will as soon as, as soon as we have that. And, um, the number of, it, it will be a smallish group, I mean, it should be no more than about 24 people. And you know, that's been a manageable size for the actual Regional Plan Committee, is about the same size. So you know, it is something that has been planned and the idea is to get the Commissions and the Supervisors and the City Council together in one room. So that, um, decisions can be made together and that they're, um, everyone is hearing the same information. But, but with that, then, um, the workshop presentations will give you kind of a pretty quick and, um. But yet thorough overview of where the Regional Plan is right now, um, because it is in a 60-day public review phase. Then that will end on December 19th. So I do have a quick presentation, well, it's about 20 slides or so, just to go through, it won't take that long. And just to give you an update on, uh, the first topic would be land use. So we thought we would give, give you a, um, and presentation about that.
Ms. Shaw?
Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
I believe I heard you explain that the retreat will be a combined city-county effort, is that correct?
That's right.
Because I know we've had discussions in the past suggesting that that might be not the most effective way. So that, those discussions, I, I guess, I guess we're not going that route, is that correct?
Well, we, 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 we did, um, talk about this with city staff and just, um, you know, the plan. Um, and this was the, this was planned back when the public participation plan was designed and then also approved by the City Council and Board of Supervisors. As part of the plan to update the Flagstaff Regional Plan, um, to have a joint retreat, um, with city and county boards and appointed officials. So, um, you know, that, that has been, um, messaged for a while then throughout, you know, the whole process, that that would occur. Uh, toward, you know, the end of the 60-day public review and then before the public hearings. So, you know, because that was decided by, uh, City Council and Board of Supervisors as, as a, um, a programmed part of the update. We would have to go back and have, and request that that be changed, um, moving into the future. And, and then going along with that, then, you know, there, there was a budget set aside to have a facilitator actually be there to run the meeting and to make it very, very efficient. And, you know, um, but at the same time be able to convey all the information to everyone within a day at this point, so.
So in, in one day, 24 people are going to review 250 to 300 pages of a plan? And have, that's, that's the goal here?
Well, it will, you know, it will be not going through page by page because, you know, like with the Comprehensive Plan, the Regional Plan has gotten, um, multiple chapters with detailed background information. It will mainly be focused on the goals and policies. And there are, um, a manageable number of those, so that should be, I, I'm pretty, um, confident that it would be a, a really well-run and workshop, well worth everybody's time. So that when it does come, so you're well-prepared when it comes to public hearings. And, and that's the other reason why we wanted to, um, give you all these workshop presentations, just to start you thinking about the, um, the content of the Regional Plan and to kind of, you know, give some extra time for preparation, if you will.
Okay, we'll watch and see how that works.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like Commissioner Best also has a question.
Are you open to any discussion right this minute?
If you like, I did kind of jump ahead on the agenda, but we can, if you have more questions about that, we're, we're on that topic now, so sure.
I get two, uh, two big questions, uh, can you hear me okay? I just put on my headset.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, one question is, uh, back in April, I started reviewing things and I saw that. Um, there are less goals and policies and more of what are called implementation items or elements. And it seems like some goals and policies have been turned into implementation elements. And so I emailed, uh, Jess McNeely, I think you know him, and Shell McNulty. And I said, gosh, goals and policies are becoming implementation items. When we meet and when the other council and supervisors and. Uh, City Council meets, uh, will implementation items be presented with goals and policies? And will they have the same weight? In other words, they, they. They will be taken into account when the finding is made, that the particular case is in compliance with the Regional Plan. And the answer I get from both Michelle and Jess was yes. In the Regional Plan, as it's written now, it says no. So.
Sorry.
That's interesting because we've turned. A lot of goals and policies into something that is no longer taken into account for determining compliance and making that finding. Any comment on that? Do I, do I have that right?
Well, Commissioner Best, that is an excellent question and, um, if you don't mind, I think this presentation will clear that up. And maybe we can revisit that if, let's, if I can go through the presentation because there, um, we do talk specifically about goals, policies and implementation guidelines and then action items along with that. So, um, if, if the, um, presentation doesn't clear that up, then we can come back to your question. Because the, the goals and policies, just in short, are the main, um. Uh, pieces of the plans, both Comprehensive Plan and Regional Plan, area plans that are used during land use decisions. The implementation guidelines basically tell how those are interpreted and applied. And then there are additional action items, which are projects or future work program, um, items that implement the goals and policies. So there are kind of levels and nuances, but the goals and policies ultimately are the guiding, um. Light, if you will, for the land use decisions. And then the guidelines further elaborate on how that's interpreted, if that makes sense.
Well, my point is, we've just lost a whole bunch of goals and policies. And I haven't figured out which ones I care about that we lost. Uh, I'm sorry, I got in a little late. It is, is the presentation you're talking about before the March presentation?
It's going to be right now.
Oh, cool. Well, my other, my other big question, uh, so that's big question one, I got a lot of big questions, but, um. And I don't know if you're the right person for this, but, uh, carbon neutrality by 2030 disappeared.
Um. It's actually in the plan. So, um, there's specific goal that still talks about the city's carbon neutrality plan, remember?
I don't believe it is specifically in the plan and you could, you could show me the language, but.
Yeah.
It, it says specifically in the plan. That. The carbon neutrality plan. And I think the housing plan are separate documents and are not part of. The Regional Plan, there's a pretty, and I'm sorry, I don't have it at my fingertips here. But it's pretty specific and then there, it's kind of odd and I, and I'm sorry, I haven't gotten through the whole plan yet. It's a big plan, there's a lot of detail, but it looks like there's a lot of information about carbon capture. But not much about reducing carbon generation, for instance, and, and buildings and things like that. So anyway, that, that's my other big question for now, thanks.
Okay. Yeah, and we can get to that, um, in a bit, if you don't mind, we can go through. And that's a very specific question that we would dive into in terms of where that's addressed in the plan. But if you don't mind, we can, um, share this presentation and then get into those more specific questions, if you like.
Yeah, please, Melissa, let's, let's go ahead and.
Thank you, let me go ahead and get into the PowerPoint. Can make it work.
Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised.
Okay, do you see the screen now?
Yep, we're seeing it.
Great, so, um, what I have, I have, um, if any of you had been to the Region Plan Workshops, there were four of them and they each had a different theme. And so I have presentations from each of them. Uh, this one is on land use and housing and I, and also health and economy. So I wanted to just give this kind of as our first overview. We're not going to go through all four tonight, um, but we, we have those available and can certainly give those to you in upcoming study sessions. So, um, this, I believe you have seen this graphic. And this is the, um, basically the schedule for creating the Flagstaff Regional Plan. And as you know, we've been through phase one and phase two, which is basically getting organized and writing the plan. And now we're in phase three, reviewing the draft. The Advisory Committee has done their work, they've made a recommendation on the draft plan. So the draft plan is out now for the 60-day public review. Uh, once that's concluded on December 19th, then it will go through legal review, it will be revised again. And then that's all prior to phase four, which are public hearings. And then also ballot initiative, um, at this, at the city level. Um, this is a graphic that, um, was put together for the Regional Plan. And you've seen this pyramid-style graphic before. It, it's showing the hierarchy of different types of plans. And, um, what it's showing is kind of on the right side, actually how the plan is used in development projects. And then you can kind of see how the, the Regional Plan, and if you think about the Comprehensive Plan, that would also be the bottom layer. Moving up the, up the, uh, arrow there, then the area plans, neighborhood plans, parks and recreation master plans, things like that. And then finally zoning ordinances, engineering standards, code, different codes, um, are applied to development projects. And then on the other side, it's implementing the vision. So the vision of, of all these plans, um, are, are key to, to land use plans. And then, um, all of these, then, you can see moving up the ladder, um, they are the, um, kind of the building blocks, if you will, for the implementation strategies, the action items, capital improvement programming, budgeting and funding. So, you know, it's, it's not a, um, very intuitive relationship, I think. But this graphic is, does a really good job of trying to display, you know, how the Regional Plan works, both for projects on the ground and not also then implementing the vision of the plan. So during development of the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan, uh, five key pri, five priority areas, um, pretty much rose to the surface. And, um, you all may be queued in on all of these, but one of them is to create more housing attainability, you know, across the region. And to mitigate displacement, which is important, uh, when projects, development projects are proposed, to make sure that, um, people living there are not displaced. And then also at the same time to reduce housing costs. Um, there is a focus of the plan to create mixed-use denser neighborhoods to support a variety of housing types. And then also support active transportation and that's in response to the growing region. You know, um, growing in and denser versus spreading out and creating sprawl with, uh, less transportation options is, um, is the, is the direction of this, of this plan update. Um, there is a focus to reduce community-generated climate pollution and protect our air quality. And then as well with that, protect, uh, the region's significant natural and cultural resources. And then finally to expand the region's preparedness and resilience to hazards and climate change. So this slide shows, uh, the organization of the plan. And so it is different, the organization, organization is different from what you might have seen today, the current plan. So it's divided into these different chapters. Um, you know, the first two are introduction and explanatory about how the plan actually works and functions. And then the policy section is, um, what it is, it's having all the goals and policies across all of the different chapters right up front, near the beginning. So if you're familiar with the companion guide that I think all of you use pretty regularly, which has, um, basically the Cliff Notes version, it's all of our goals and policies put in one document. That's what this is as well. Um, I believe there will also end up being a separate document just with the goals and policies. And then it talks about the growth and land use framework, uh, because growth and land use, as you know, is pretty much the, you know, the heart of the plan. And then the implementation section has these other topic areas, if you will, and gets into the deep, uh, deep dive discussion with the background information for these different types of, um, of topics. And then the green highlights, um, are what this particular presentation is focused on. So that's just the structure of the plan. And then, uh, these symbols, um, are themes that came out during the, um, during the project development. And we'll be using these symbols throughout the plan. So, and if you're familiar with, for instance, the Belmont Area Plan and, and some of the other, other area plans that the county has created, we used a symbol to indicate, um, across the document where, for instance, sustainability. Um, policies related to sustainability occur throughout the document. And so the same idea here, where, but there are more themes. So for instance, in land use, if there's a theme related to community character, then that policy or goal will have this little symbol next to it. So you can start to see the relationships between themes and across all of the different, uh, chapters. And I will say that one of the, uh, questions asked during the, the workshops during the 60-day public review was if there were missing themes. So in looking at these and thinking about them, if there's something additional type of theme that the plan should address, this would be a great time to bring that up. So Commissioner Best, this gets more hard to the question that you had about some specifics on implementation versus policies versus goals. Uh, this is a, just a reminder about what a goal is. And a goal is about our future condition, what is, what do we want to look like in the future? It's a desired result or future condition that the community envisions and strives to achieve. A policy then is how we achieve the goal, um, is a course, a course of action to achieve the goal and that guides decision-making. Uh, policies in this plan can be text or maps because the Regional Plan does have a future land use map. And that future land use map is basically a policy map. And then, um, there are land use categories and that is tied directly to the future growth illustration. Um, so the land use category has a description and a pretty detailed, um. Outline of, you know, what is appropriate for each area. And I can stop, Commissioner Wilson, I see you have a question.
Um, are land use categories a new part of the Regional Plan?
Commissioner Wilson, no, they're not. They, um, are currently, and there's a, um, a visual or a graphic of the map on the next, in the next couple of slides. But no, they are existing and just as a side note, the county's Comprehensive Plan also has land use categories listed in it. Although, as you know, the county does not have a future land use map. So, um, yeah.
The land use categories then differ from zoning how?
Exactly, they do. So the land use categories are future growth ideas. So they look at, um, both existing zoning, but then also look at where additional growth might occur and what will be appropriate in each area. So it, it may reflect existing zoning, but it may also reflect something that could be in the future, for instance, a higher density. But the, um, so what the, the thing about a land use map or a future land use map is there can't be anything that will impact existing entitlements. So there can't be anything. So there can't be anything that would, that would take away existing zoning entitlements. So that's something that was very carefully looked at in developing this.
Okay, thank you.
And just then to talk more about the implementation section. So there are implementation guidelines. And when you look at the plan under the different policies, there, there may be a list of one or two or more, or even none, for instance, um, guidelines that are assumptions, policies or principles. I actually wouldn't say that they're policies so much, but they are, they are principles that explain how the goal or policy could be interpreted and applied. So it's additional ways to illustrate how that policy can be used. And, uh, because as Commissioner Best mentioned, there are fewer goals and policies in this update, which was intentional. There were, I believe, over 500 policies in the current plan. And I can't remember exactly how many goals, which is, was, that's a lot of policies to try to, to look through. And in addition to that, a lot of the policies were, were written. There was redundancy, but there were also policies that really weren't written in a policy language. They were more written in terms of this should be something that guided a policy or it's a to-do item. So there's been a lot of cleanup that way. Um, and then there is an action item section, which you may be familiar with our comprehensive plan, action item list. And this is similar. These are specific strategies, projects, procedures, programs that will implement the goals and policies. They were looked at by the, um, the region plan committee. They've been prioritized and, um, they've been assigned to different departments at different weather county or cities. So they are kind of a work plan going forward for the next 10 years. Um, I just want to show you and we'll, we'll, oops, pardon me, uh, get back to this. But, um, during 60 day public review, and I'm, I'll call this site up later, we're actually hosting the draft plan on our Convio site. So it's easy to go in and read and comment on, at least I, I hope it is. There is a lot, as Commissioner Best mentioned, there are a lot, there's a lot of reading to do. But it's fairly, uh, straightforward in our order to, I'm sorry, my computer is moving ahead, um, to make, to read and make comments on them, on the draft plan. Um, back to the maps. And then I believe the next slide is the future land use map. Um, the policy maps define geographic ac- application of, of a policy, such as the future land uses, future trails, that actually I looked at during, um, project review, um, such as if for rezonings. And then the implementation section is more informational maps. And Commissioner Best, I see you have a question.
Uh, just a comment and suggestion, if you could explain everybody, to everybody, how to register?
Oh, I will.
You could, you can go on to this and not register and put in comments. But if you want to edit your comments, you have to register. And I have found that if I make a comment and then I see the same comment on the next page, I just get rid of my comment. So I do want to edit my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll bring that up when we're done with this because I would like to go into the site and show you how to use it. Commissioner Wilson?
I'm curious about the, the policy maps. So if a policy map includes a future trail location and someone applies for a rezone or CUP in the vicinity of that future trail location, will we as a commission be expected to? How much weight would we be expected to give to this map versus the landowner's rights?
Right, well, and, and that's a great question. The, the trail map then is based on, um, city and county trail maps. So there's, there aren't-
Well, trail isn't, I just use that as the example, but anything on these maps in the regional plan, what weight do they carry? These, this isn't directive, this isn't law in the county, right?
Well, so the future growth illustration map, for instance, that you have up on the screen now. And, um, just as a side note, when you go into the plan review website, you can zoom in to different areas on this. But, um, so this would be the policy map that we would look at, for instance, in a rezoning case. And so, um, I will mention that for all of the areas on this map in the county, it pretty much, it just reflects existing zoning. So, um, if there was a rezoning on these, then, um, you know, we would look at this. And here over, um, on the right side, these are the land use categories listed here in this legend. And so we would look at that rezoning and see, look for consistency with this map. Um, and then, you know, look at the goals and policies as well. It, it's something that does guide future land use decisions. So, and the same with the trail policy map. And, you know, but obviously that is something that looks, is looked at pretty specifically in terms of the location of the trail, the, um, the project being proposed and, um, you know, how that trail plan would be implemented.
So are, it's, I think you just said that this for the county is going to reflect current zoning. So it, what's the value to the county of having a future growth illustration?
Well, in the city, I just back up a little bit. So in the city, there are areas that actually show different, um, perhaps an increased density over what current zoning would allow. Um, for the county, um, you know, because the region is, uh, illustrated by this rectangle here. Um, because it's got a, you know, we have a future land use map for the region that we wanted to show. Um, we couldn't just leave it blank. So it's going to show future, um, conditions for the county as well. It doesn't mean that that would be limited, um, to what we see today. But it could, it could require a plan amendment, for instance, if there was something that was proposed that was different than what's on this map.
And, and then I just noticed that it's the, uh, legend there says rural center, is that a rural activity center?
Yeah, the name was changed just to simplify it. Rural Center is essentially rural activity center. Mm-hmm. And then this was changed, so, and you're, you're familiar with a lot of our area plans show essentially a circle or a bubble where an activity center is. We just went in and identified the commercial zoning and put, because this is a parcel specific map this time versus, uh, the previous future growth map was more of a, um, like a paint map, for instance. It wasn't parcel specific. So this is now parcel specific. But it just reflects, you know, current zoning in those activity centers, the rural centers that we know today in the county. Commissioner Best?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to be pedantic, but I think this is a really important point. We can't take anybody's rights away. We can't downzone. We, if somebody's got a right to do something on their property, we can't take it away without compensating them. Uh, you know, we have a very strong Prop 207, taking's proposition. But if someone wants more rights on their property, if they come to us for rezoning and that trail is in the neighborhood, then we can say, well, gosh, if you want more rights on your property, we need to balance your increased, your, your request for increased rights with community values and plans. And therefore, if you want that zoning, uh, let's get a trail in there someplace. So I, I, I just think that's an important part to make. We, we're not, we're not in the business of taking rights away, we can't do it.
Exactly. Um, and here is just, um, a list. And then the plan does describe in detail each land use category. So you can see for residential, there's urban, suburb, suburban and rural. And then there are centers, corridors or neighborhoods. And then in suburban neighborhoods, they're high and medium density. Those do occur mainly in the city. Actually, they do occur in the city. Except in Belmont, you can see there are suburban neighborhoods, which is consistent with the zoning over there in Belmont. And then the other, uh, types of categories, the employment category, uh, university and research district, parks and open space. And then federal lands and working landscapes. The federal lands and working landscape is a new, um, heading. And that pretty much describes, um, that is in this lighter green color. And it is pretty much, um, the Forest Service land and, um, and large ranches that we, um, that was just a, an update to the land use categories that makes a lot of sense in terms of working landscapes. And then, um, when you get into the charts and really start reading the land use category, these are the different components of that, um, of that description. So obviously desired density is one of them, whether it's residential, commercial, mixed use or industrial focused. Um, it talks about patterns of land uses, how, how they are laid out. Um, if it's residential, the types of housing, how the transportation and transit design should appear. Um, it really, um, it does talk about street connectivity as well as parking and, you know, how that would look in the future. And then it talks about parks and open space in relation to a land use category. And this next slide, this is just an example of the illustrations that are in the plan. Um, so the image on the left is current conditions and the image in the right would be how that could look in the future if the policies are applied as the plan is suggesting with this update. So, and it, you can see the different, um, the different area, or rather, the different icons on the right, which talks about, for instance, improved bicycle structures, mixed use buildings, enhanced pedestrian crossings, how the transit options might look. Um, and that sort of, that sort of enhancement. So, um, this is just an illustration of how the policies in the plan could be applied to, uh, to that type of land use category. So there, this is just an example. There are a lot of illustrations in the plan that are tied to those categories that are, um, uh, fairly specific, but also, um, general enough to just leave room for, um, future policy interpretation and then design ideas. So the next couple of slides, actually Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, if you could back up that one slide real quick. So the regional plan authors believe that the after photo here is an improvement over the before?
It's interesting. Well, there, if you look at the different components of, you know, a, a street may not have all of these parts to it, but the, um, the additional, um, pedestrian and biking facilities are what was, you know, heard during the workshops as being a, a needed, um, improvement for the future. The transit feature, again, that's something that was needed in the future to, um, address additional density. So yeah, that, this is a collection of ideas here.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Best?
Uh, yeah, related to this picture, uh, a fun fact, virtually all commercial property in the city of Flagstaff is zoned for 60 feet at the sidewalk. Roll that over in your head a little bit. Most people have no idea that's true. Virtually all commercial property and, uh, multifamily is zoned for 60 feet at the cycle. So the hub, which is now the Jack, which is kind of what you're looking at right there, that can happen on virtually any commercial property in Flagstaff. Every mom and pop convenience store, every parking lot. So that right there, if Flagstaff is built out to the max of what zoning allows, you're looking at Flagstaff. Interesting to ponder.
That's sad.
Well, again, that, that is responding, like Commissioner Best said, that's current zoning. And, you know, the, the plan is responding to increased growth and needing to keep that in a location where transit can be supplied, where pedestrian facilities can be created to make that denser, more walkable community that it's a balance. It's a balance between this and, um, you know, spreading out in a, in a pattern that is not what people have actually said they wanted.
Well, actually, we can't spread out. We're, we're geographically locked in. And the high density infill development that this type of illustration points out, I suspect is exactly the opposite of what the majority of the people that live in and are considered, would want to move to Flagstaff would want to see. So it's just kind of surprising. Thank you.
Commissioner Best?
Yeah, I, just to be crystal clear, uh, throughout the plan is written, we're talking increased density. And, uh, we want more density so we don't have to sprawl. I'm a little unclear if the intention, so, so right now in suburban neighborhoods, you know, most of us live in houses in suburban neighborhoods, separate houses. Right now, we can put, I think, two, uh, accessory dwelling units on our property. Is the plan to go into established residential neighborhoods that are single family homes and rezone them to allow multifamily? In other words, could I end up with an apartment building next to my house?
So the future growth illustration, back to that, shows the, um, when you start to zoom in, shows the different locations for potentially increased density. But that would be where it fits us. And that's, you know, I don't have the, a slide for every illustration of each of these, um, these land use categories. But the, um, for instance, a suburban or a suburban center could have a higher density, but it would not be the same as what you're seeing in this illustration. So it was, um, the, in other words, where, where your neighborhood is, Commissioner Best, that would not be rezoned for high density apartments, like the hub or something. But it could have additional and, uh, residential units, um, that are smaller scale that would actually fit into that character.
Okay, but, I mean, basically these neighborhoods are built out. They're already there and they're full of houses. How, how would that work?
Yeah, I mean, I'm using, thinking of the example of my, my neighborhood near the hospital. And there is still room there, there are still some vacant lots. And, um, as you mentioned, every, well, in the county as well, um, we're entitled to have a second unit. And that could be a small unit that is built into an existing footprint. Or, you know, if there's room with this, within setbacks, that could then be added to that, to that space. So that's what this future growth illustration is, is looking at, is what is appropriate in these different neighborhoods for a somewhat of an increased density. Yeah, so this is, this is where, um, you know, looking, going specific to the map and looking at those different places and commenting whether or not this future growth illustration is appropriate for that area, that's, this is the time to do that. But it was, um, you know, it's not a broad brush, you know, across the city where, um, the plan is proposing that high density residential apartment style development in all residential areas. It's, it's mu- much more nuanced than that.
And can we zoom in on this map?
Well, I can't on this slide, but I can show you, once we get into the website, how to do that.
Okay, yeah, I was trying to figure out how to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, the next couple of slides just really address major and minor plan amendments in the regional plan. Now, you all know that the county's comprehensive plan also has major and minor plan amendment criteria, and we're not changing anything with the comprehensive plan. Um, this does add some flexibility to how the regional plan can be changed because my understanding is right now it's very limited in terms of what a major plan amendment is versus a minor plan amendment. So, um, just to get- So, um, just to get into some of those details, the, um, yeah, the, I, I'm, this is actually something that you can read about if you want to understand what a major plan amendment is in the current regional plan. Um, and just I want to point out, text amendment number nine is a major plan amendment. So if there's a, um, some sort of error or some sort of, um, word change in a, um, in the text in the regional plan, then that is actually a major plan amendment today. So, um, this is something that the current regional plan, uh, addresses. But then the changes, um, to the categories of, uh, in the, um, regional plan for the major amendment categories would be, um, that any decrease in intensity or density within the urban growth boundary, um, is a major plan amendment. And likewise, an increase in intensity outside of the urban growth boundary is a major plan amendment. Changing a parcel to a corridor that does not have access to arterial or collector is a major plan amendment, or would be. And then decreasing the amount of parks and open space and federal lands and working landscapes would be a major plan amendment. And then deleting a goal or policy would be a major plan amendment. And then change to administrative changes would be basically fixing, um, formatting, Scrivener's errors, typographical errors, um, URLs, um, would be an administrative change. Again, Scrivener's changes in mapping or text. Um, so any change to the future growth illustration that was adopted by either the city or the county could then be incorporated into the, um, into the plan without further amendment, other than, um, an administrative change. And then you can see the other, the other category. So this does, um, make it easier to correct errors in the plan and, um, and just make def- uh, informational updates, the plan easier with an administrative change rather than going through a major plan amendment. Commissioner Best.
Could you go back one and show the open space?
Yeah, number four.
Yeah, how does that relate to what the city just did with zoning? They rezoned all parks and open space to, uh, allow for multifamily housing.
Commissioner Best, I am not familiar with what that change entailed. I'd have to find out.
Okay, well, that's an interesting. Yeah, it's a sort of neither here nor there situation. They didn't really decrease the area, but in effect, they allowed the area to be decreased without a zone change.
Yeah, and I can't speak to that.
Questions for a different time, and thanks.
Um, so that, that's a, just an overview of, very quick overview of the, um, update and some of the major changes to the plan. Obviously, there are a lot more details in the policies and the goals themselves. So that's something that we'll look at in a moment. But I just wanted to mention that tonight, um, starting at 5:30, but you'll be in your meeting, is a closing webinar. Um, so you can actually go and, um, hear a live webinar to get, um, a more detailed update than what we're giving you right now. Um, and then there have been office hours. Uh, all of the workshops, by the way, are concluded, but there are still office hours to attend. Uh, the next one will be this Friday out at the Belmont Fire Station. And then next Friday, out at, um, in Donnie Park, um, at Summit Fire Station on Coke Field Road. So those are from 11. Actually, this slide is, has an error. It's from 11 o'clock to 2:00 P.M. Um, and then, so after the 60-day public review is concluded on the 19th, then what will happen? There'll be, um, kind of a pause where staff will go through the public comments and start to organize those and incorporate those into text updates. Um, if there's a need to bring back issues for the committee, then the, the regional plan committee will be reconvened. Um, a final legal review will occur at the ti- at this time to go through the document to see if there's anything that is, that needs to be addressed in terms of statute. And then, um, talking about your retreat in March, um, having you with the city planning commission, the board supervisors and the city council, look at this and look at the goals and policies for any major, um, decisions that might need to be made jointly where that, in terms of addressing any outstanding issues. And then after that, and there's not an exact date yet for city public hearings, um, but that would be, um, after the retreat in March. And then right now, the ballot initiative again for the city is planned for November of 2025. So the city public hearings will be prior to that. And then after the ballot initiative, this would come to the, the county for public hearings. And that was the end of this presentation. And I would like to go in, if there's time, to the actual, um, website.
Uh, we, Melissa, we are closing in on five o'clock and there's several items on the list.
Okay.
Uh, how long do you think that will take?
It'll be quick.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we can get through all of our items and still have some, we have some things to discuss at roundtable, so I want to make sure we have, thanks.
Yeah, I'll be quick with this. Um, I just wanted to show then, um, this is the Flagstaff Regional Plan website. Here's the home tab and I, I can send you all the link. You just click on 60-day public review and then what you can do right here is to click on this image and it takes you right into the commenting section where you can start going. And you can see people have started to make comments. You can read people's comments. And as Commissioner Best mentioned, you can go in and register up here as a user and that way you can go in and edit your comments. So, um, so that's just very simple and, and, um, a good way to submit comments because then it makes it easy for staff in the end to download spreadsheets and, and organize and analyze them. And I think that's all I wanted to give you on the regional plan update. While we're, while I have my screen shared, I do want to just jump right over to talk about the county's comprehensive plan update. Two big plan updates going on at the same time, and this is the county's project website. Um, we have started to post our draft chapters, um, up here. So our advisory group has started to review the different topics. They have looked at these topics here that are engraved with sustainability, resilience, energy and climate, water resources, diverse cultures, community character, natural environment and circulation and transportation. Their next meeting, um, they've just made a change, will be in January, um, to look at land use, um, parks, open space. And then in February, right now is planned to look at the community services, public safety and resilient economies and housing. So, um, with that, then what's not showing on here are additional meetings where they'll be looking at revisions to the chapters that have been reviewed. But the two chapters that have been rereviewed, if you will, are sustainability, resilience, energy, climate and water resources. And you can just click on this and bring up the document. But these are the current drafts that are available now. And that's all I wanted to share, um, other than to mention the schedule change for the advisory group meetings are moving into January. So we're starting to push those out a, a little bit. Commissioner Best.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, council will approve the regional plan. It will be voted on, we assume approved, and then we review it. Or do, can we change our version of it? I mean, it's not, it already exists in the city. It's been passed by council and the voters. Uh, when we review it, what are we doing?
Well, ideally then that, what, that's part of what you'll discuss at the retreat is looking at the document and finding any inconsistencies or any issues that may need to be addressed then before it goes to any kind of public hearing or a ballot initiative so that we don't have two different plans. Um, you know, there's always the opportunity if there is something that comes up that, you know, potentially could adopt a different version. But I think that for consistency, the, the goal would be to, um, basically address any issues prior to that so that we're avoiding a situation where we have two different plans. Because this is a regional plan and it, it does get complicated with the difference between the ballot initiative for the city and there's not a ballot initiative to the county. So it does create that timing issue. But I, um, you know, that is something that is certainly why we definitely encourage this joint retreat and to be co- to come prepared to that as much as possible.
Yeah. Uh, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson.
Ms. Shaw, after our retreat, any of the changes that are recommended as a result of that retreat will be considered and/or adopted, and then nothing else will change throughout the rest of that process?
Well, there will be public hearings and as you know, then public hearings, things can change then. Um.
So we're going to review something and then it's going to change, going to be voted on by the city and we're going to be expected to then accept it.
Well, we will keep you informed about those.
Kind of a yes or no.
Yeah, I don't, no, I don't think that that will be the case. I think that, you know, if there are changes, then we'll be, you know, make the commission well aware of what those potentially are after the public hearings. But that's a, I mean, that is a good point and things can change. So, uh, that's something that we'll have to see what occurs, um, at the, at the public hearings and then at the ballot.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shaw, do you have anything further?
Thank you. That was all in terms of the long range updates.
Okay, um, Mr. McNeeley, do we want to go to the board of supervisors update?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Burden, Vice Chair Burton. Um, so board of supervisors update, uh, just want to let you know that on November 15th, the, um, the board approved zone change 2403. That was a zone change, uh, for one lot in Munn's Park, uh, that was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, we will be getting scheduled for the board, um, uh, the, um, any, any future zone changes, there is a zone change on your, on your hearing this evening. Uh, don't have it on here, but next week, um, next Tuesday, December 10th, the board supervisors will hear the open space zone change, um, for the county-owned, uh, county parks and recreation managed, um, open space parcels or, or, um, uh, yeah, o- open space, natural area parcels in Kachina Village and, um, and Rogers Lake Natural Area. So that open space zone change that you recommended approval of, uh, I believe last month or the month before, goes to the board supervisors next Tuesday. If anyone wants to join in on the supervisor's hearing starts at, um, at 4:15 P.M. Any questions on board of supervisor actions?
I don't see any. Let's move on to roundtable.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Um, so this, and, and thank you for, uh, for realizing we need some time for this one, Vice Chair Burton. So, um, for commission and staff roundtable, and this is great that in your study session, we can have, it is, it is open to the public, but we can have, um, we can have open discussion on these items. Uh, as, as most of you all, I'm sure know, uh, congratulations are in order to, uh, Tammy Ontiveros, uh, your chair Ontiveros, um, as in that she was elected to the county board of supervisors. Uh, she has since, um, submitted her resignation to the planning and zoning commission as obviously, uh, you can't sit on the planning and zoning commission and be an elected supervisor. Um, so, uh, today's public hearing agenda had, the second item on your agenda will be to elect a new commission chair and vice chair. And, uh, Vice Chair Burton, if you wanted to entertain any discussion among the commissioners on that item.
Yes, so, um, we can discuss it as a commission. I am happy to step into the chair position, which will open up the vice chair position. Um, I would like to get a feel for, yeah, oh, Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead. You're still muted. Are we able to help him and unmute on, on the host's side?
I do not have the, the capability to unmute him at this point from what I'm looking at. I don't know if, if Shar might have that capability. Um.
Seems to be a repeat issue we keep having with teams where.
Yeah, exactly. So we, we, uh, we would have the opportunity to mute someone, uh, those of us who are, who are hosts of the meeting. Uh, but I don't have the opportunity to unmute. When I look at the options I've got here, there's nothing here for me to unmute.
Why don't you try muting him and unmuting him?
Okay, well, he is muted, so, so the mute participant, uh, option here is grayed out.
Oh, nevermind.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, Commissioner Ruggles, maybe you could, if you need to exit the meeting and come back in, um, give us a message in the chat otherwise.
Yep, there he goes.
Okay.
And yeah, hopefully he'll be back in in a second. Yeah, this is definitely a conundrum we keep having specific to, to his. And I seem to have more limited options on what I can do with the web.
Hi, there he is. Yeah, that, that, that did it. I, I have this continual fight with, uh, Microsoft going on. Um, everything was working fine previously, so it's working again. So thank you. Uh, anyway, this may be, um, getting ahead of things a little bit, but after careful consideration, uh, of this item, I believe that, uh, it would be appropriate for me, uh, to, uh, nominate Tiana as continual, continue, for continuing as chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And, and I am happy to take that on. And if everybody's in agreement, then that's, we can definitely make that motion when we get into public hearing. Does anyone else, is anyone else interested in it? Does anyone else want to have any comments on it? I'm not seeing any. Um, oh, there we go, Commissioner Wilson.
I, I fully support you being the chairperson of this commission and appreciate very much your volunteering to do so.
Appreciate that. Um, on that note, I would like to recommend on my side that Commissioner Wilson, um, be vice chair, if that's something that he is willing to do and, um, we can discuss as a commission. Anybody have any thoughts? I'm hearing cricket, so I'm guessing that's, that's an okay with everyone. Um, okay, so if we don't have any further discussion on that, then we can move on to the next item and we'll, we'll re-address it in the public hearing and, and we probably won't, I'll ask if we have further discussion, but I'm guessing that's probably not going to be the case. So, um, let's go ahead and if there's nothing further, let's move on to number two on the roundtable.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Burton. Uh, for number two, as we discussed a, a second ago, um, Tammy Ontiveros is now the district three supervisor-elect. Uh, she will be sworn in, I believe, on January 9th. Um, so staff will be coordinating with her to replace her seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, so, um, I'm sure, uh, you know, there's always some discussion on who do, who do you all know in the community who live in the dis- different districts? Um, who might make good planning and zoning commissioners? Uh, you'd certainly be free to reach out to her if, if you have any recommendations. I believe, uh, she has some ideas herself. Um, she's always quite well-prepared, as we all know. So I think she has some ideas on, on who she would like to nominate. So we will be coordinating, we as staff will be coordinating directly with her on, um, on who she would like to, uh, who she would like to appoint. And Vice Chair Burton, if it's okay with you, I can jump to number three?
Yes, let's go ahead.
Okay, on number three, this is where the real fun begins with the change to the district map that becomes effective in the new year. So as we stated, um, we have So as we stated, um, we have a vacancy um in District Three from uh from Tammy Ontiveros moving on to be a supervisor. And again, we'll work with her to replace um, to replace that seat in District Three. If uh we just go in numerical order, jump to District One. Um, uh, Commissioner Williams, you are still in District One. So status quo, you are still appointed by Supervisor Horstman. Um, uh, Commissioner Best, congratulations. Uh, with the map change, you have moved from District One to being in District Two. So um, the first question would be, uh, would you be open to continuing to be appointed as a commissioner, but now in District Two?
That's funny. I I didn't even notice any any changes. There was no seismic activity or anything. Uh, but yes, I would be open.
Okay, well, feel free to reach out to uh Supervisor Geronimo Vazquez.
I've been, I I have a meeting with him uh pretty late in the month, but I do have a meeting scheduled.
Okay, that I I as I, as I would expect, no less. But we we can do the same if uh if you would like to stay um on the commission. Um, and now that you live in District Two, um, we can coordinate with Supervisor Vasquez to have you reappointed, but now from District Two.
And so we are looking for, he is looking for a new appointment as well, right?
It correct, correct. And we we will jump into that as we continue playing the, it's, I kind of feel like we're playing the the peas under the pod game as people are shifting. Um, several of, several of y'all are are shifting. Uh, Vice Chair Burton, congratulations, you're staying in District Three. So assuming that um now Supervisor Tommy, Tammy Ontiveros wants to leave you um appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think uh we can say you're you're secure in your seat. Um, Commissioners Tohe and Walsh, you are both appointed in District Four. And there's no, there, you are not affected by a map change in District Four. So you all stay appointed by Supervisor Judah Begay. And Commissioners Wilson and Ruggles, you, the map change has moved you both out of District Two into District Five. So that's where um, that's where we now have a uh an opportunity to fill the District Five seats. So likewise, um Commissioners Wilson and Ruggles, would you be open to being appointed now to District Five by Supervisor Lena Fowler?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
I guess I have my hand up somewhere here.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I would like to make a comment on that. That um, when we go back to when the district boundaries were uh officially uh changed, at that that time, I was about a year away from reappointment. So upon reappointment uh in twenty twenty-three, I made it a point to inform Supervisor Fowler that should she find someone in the interim or even at this point, um, that I would uh be very happy to resign in order for her to appoint someone of her choice uh to this position. So I I don't think everyone on the current commission uh knows that, but I just want to get out there because that's the way I look at it. It is up to her to decide who best represents the district.
Absolutely. Um, thanks for letting us know that, Commissioner Ruggles.
You bet.
So we will pass on to Supervisor Fowler that both Commissioners Wilson and Ruggles are are willing to continue serving if she would like to appoint you from her district. So um if that all goes, uh, as we've discussed, that'll be a great thing. Um, yeah, we we don't want to lose a quorum before your hearings. Uh, and that leaves an opening, uh, as we've discussed in District Three, that'll be appointed by uh now Supervisor Ontiveros, leaves one opening in District One. Uh, so um Supervisor Patrice Horstman has an opportunity to appoint someone new to the commission in District One. And we have the one opening in District Two. So that leaves an opportunity for um Supervisor Vasquez to appoint a new commissioner in District Two. Um, if anyone has good ideas for where those, where those three openings exist, um, uh, feel free to contact me. Um, we can pass on information to the supervisors. Feel free to reach out to those supervisors, um, if you would like to, on on who you think in the community might um might be a great addition to the uh to the commission. And I see a lot of hands. I don't know whose went up first here.
Um, well, Commissioner Ruggles was up first, but I don't know that he lowered his, so.
Oh, yeah, there's numbers. That's great. Okay.
All right, so Commissioner Best is next.
Yeah, Commissioner Best, uh, any questions, comments?
Oh. He dropped his hand.
He dropped as well. So uh Commissioner Wilson, any questions or comments on uh on the spreadsheet here?
By default, um, I would just ask in the future, when you post things like this, that things like personal phone numbers and that kind of information not be included?
Good point. Yeah, um, that is a, that is a great thing for you to point out, and I sincerely apologize in trying to facilitate this discussion. Um, we uh, we did not think about that and that this is open to the public.
Just hide, hide those columns.
We will, we will. Um, uh, we don't have any, uh, we don't have any members of the public on the meeting right now. It's just, it's just all us. But yeah, thank you. That I apologize for that. Um, okay.
Jess, uh, I I have come across it, but I, last time I tried, I couldn't find it. Could you send us all a link to a map of the districts that we can zoom in on?
Sure, absolutely.
It'd be nice, nice to know what the boundaries are, especially uh in town.
Absolutely.
Okay, appreciate it.
So if you go to the county's parcel viewer, um, which which we use quite a bit. Um, and you guys see in my parcel viewer map here?
Yes, we are.
Okay, you should be able to go down here and click on Supervisor Districts. Once you click on Supervisor Districts, you can zoom in. Let's get over here to uh.
Where did you find map layers? Was that?
It's under map layers is is what looks like stacked pieces of paper right here.
Okay.
Right there. And then that you can, you can zoom in on. Um, and as a matter of fact, you can click on any given, on any given property. Um, let's find a nice golf course frontage property here. Um, you can click on any given property and it'll bring up a data window right here. Um, and it will even tell you if you scroll down, who's the supervisor for this district and the part, the random parcel I just clicked on, the um, the it falls within District Four Judah Begay. Okay?
Great.
All right. Well, um, Vice Chair Onto, Vice Chair Burton, um, that is all staff has for the Commission and Staff Roundtable. Uh, but happy to discuss anything else that um that any of the commissioners might want to discuss.
Um, but before we jump in really quick, I just had a very quick question for you, Ms. McNeeley. Um, given all the the struggles that poor, poor Commissioner Ruggles keeps having with Microsoft not unmuting him.
Yes.
Is it possible for the county to provide him with one of those like one-sided headsets that he can just flip the mic up and down so that he can leave it active, but it wouldn't actually be active when, until he puts it back down to talk? I'm just wondering if that might be a solution for him, and he raised his hand probably to chime in on that.
I've got to say that that probably uh would not work. The the issue is uh mine alone in that I have to go in and tell Microsoft Teams that there is only one account in my name. This um did not start until uh the um the problem, the the first problem I had with this. So uh normally, this has been working ever since the pandemic with no problems. Most of this occurred with the Windows eleven, which I have on the new computer. So um the last time around, there was no problem with this. That was a one-time only. This time, just leaving, coming back in on the account that I normally use for this has worked quite well. So it shouldn't be a problem. Matter of fact, it wasn't a problem at the beginning uh after I got the uh two uh Commissioner Ruggles uh um icons off the screen. So I I'm not sure how this happened this time, but I think it's the two accounts problem.
Okay, I, so it's not, you're not muting it and then it's just not unmuting? It's just muting you on its own and then not unmuting?
Uh, that is exactly what happened this time.
Okay, well, that's fun.
Uh, like I said, it is a Microsoft uh Windows eleven problem.
This does not surprise me. No, trust me, it does not surprise me.
Yes.
Okay, I just thought I'd, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, I've heard, I've heard a lot of feedback from other people who I know that are using uh eleven and um uh very similar problems uh occurring. So we'll see next time. And I know one thing that we'll sort it out real quick. That worked this time. Next time, let's hope I can get it sorted out before that. So thank you.
Okay, no problem.
So Vice Chair Burton, and and I realize we have two other hands up, but on on that note, we would encourage any commissioners who would ever like to come into our building here on Four Valley Road, bring in your laptop. We've got Wi-Fi here in the building. Um, we could sit down with you. We have I T in in this building right here with us. So if you're ever um wanting to test things, and we all acknowledge that that uh Microsoft just updates things on a regular, but you know, every now and then we open up an application, we're like, whoa, this is, I'm seeing different buttons. I'm seeing um, seeing different things. So we know that happens. But um if there's anything specific you're experiencing, any of the commissioners, uh, you can contact me directly. But um, you know, our, we're here. Um, we have people here and we have I T here. Eight to five, Monday through Friday, we'd be happy to have you come in and we can even do little, little practices. You know, I can create a little meeting, um, have you log into it and and try things out. So um that is always available to you and and we'd be happy to help you in that way.
Okay, sounds good. Um, okay, Commissioner Best, you had some comments?
I wonder if uh I guess I don't even know what I'm after here. Uh, Horstman's Lodge. That was a bombshell. Maybe it was a bombshell we all expected, but uh if if we could get a a report on that, uh, and if the report is just right now, there's absolutely nothing, no relationship between the county and and Horstman's Lodge, that's one answer. Uh, I would hope that I'm not sure how how, I I'm not sure if it's now done and irrefutable. I'm not sure if uh whoever is running it, whether it's gaming or tribal authorities or whatever, is open to working with the county and and uh hearing about the values that we care about. Uh, dark skies certainly comes up top of the list. Um, so anyway, just that whole issue, uh, it's certainly an interesting situation.
Mr. Best, that was the uh same issue that I have a comment on, and I do have some background information. Um, so unless someone else would like to add to that, um, I have some some questions to add to Commissioner Best. Um, starting with, um, as the co-chair of the Doni Park Area Plan Rewrite Committee, um, we worked um extremely hard to the point where we actually had several special meetings after we thought we were done specifically to address this particular concern of our community. And we've, we fought um valiantly against what seemed like a lot of resistance from the county, from um the county supervisors, from the county legal department and um basically lost any real authority or or ability to put anything in our area plan um that would would help to at least incorporate some community comment into this kind of a process. Um, it appears at this point now that the land has officially been transferred, that the Gaming Commission already has in the compact the authority to have as many as three hundred gaming machine or a uh gaming devices um onsite. Um, and that uh, this is a process that has been working behind the scenes, um, but very diligently for the last couple of years and was facilitated primarily by a change that happened in January of this year. Um, where the current administration changed the way that land can be transferred to trust land, eliminated any of the required public comment periods, provided the opportunity for the state and the county to comment if they chose to, but made it optional and gave full authority to the Director of the Bureau of Indian Affairs to approve that land transfer, which is what happened. So there are a lot of very, very unhappy people out here in Doni Park right now that feel like um their rights and their thoughts and their their feelings, their land has all been um severely disrespected through this process. And I think it would be really important that the county put together a very comprehensive and and easy to understand explanation for how this happened. Um, so that everyone understands that. Because right now, uh, there's a lot of people that are understandably, especially those that live adjacent to a property that will now um have over a hundred employees, will have um three hundred gaming devices. Um, will have to figure out what they're going to do with their sewage, will have to find a source for water, will still have to negotiate um public safety issues like fire and uh E M S protection. Um, there, there's a long way to go with all this process, but ultimately, uh, the character of Doni Park that our area plan committee worked so hard to try to preserve um has been destroyed, at least in that little part. Thank you.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, one comment on Commissioner Wilson's uh comments here. Um, what he referred to in terms of changes at the uh the B I A and therefore Department of the Interior, very simply is that uh what they did is quite apparently have based that uh um change that brought the Horstman Lodge properties into uh trust status and therefore part of the reservation is based on the fact that they believe that, and this was in the press release, that it was a land settlement. And that relates to the nineteen seventy-four Land Settlement Act, uh, which is sometimes referred to as the Relocation Act. And it is apparent that uh Department of Interior believe that because it was a land settlement, that notification, which has previously been required under code of federal regulations, is no longer necessary, and that includes both the state and the county. And here we are. So that's it in a nutshell.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Best, I would like to give us a couple minute break before our um hearing, the public hearing starts. So if you could keep it brief, that'd be great.
So after going on now twenty years of doing this, I see my job in those, in this seat that I'm in at this moment as balancing values. And I hope as we move forward, you know, I I don't know if there's, I I assume it's a done deal. So uh we have values in our comprehensive plan. And the question is whether those values are going to be respected by the folks putting this project together. Uh, a lot of those values are are consistent with what I read uh when tribal members and tribal entities are expressing their values. Um, and so I hope that we can, at best, uh, you know, call me a Pollyanna, it it that it, that we can get together and do the best we can to make this consistent with uh the desire of the tribe to make money and but also the desire of the tribe to express its values. And many times they're consistent with the And many times, they're consistent with the greater community's values. That's how, assuming this is a done deal, that's how I would approach it, and the fact that we have two supervisors from the tribe should help. So, I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Let's take a brief, like, one and a half minute break before we reconvene for the public hearing.